Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
It's, uh, it's recording now.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Rissman.
President.
Councilmember Mackin.
Present.
Councilmember Johnson is absent. Councilmember Canot.
Here.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Here.
Councilmember Putzko.
Here.
Councilmember Hazelbaker.
Here.
Councilmember Houts.
Here.
And Mayor Kramer.
I'm here. We've heard from Councilman Johnson. He is at work. We'd look for a motion to excuse him, please.
Motion.
Thanks, Jim. Thanks, John. We have a motion and we have support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? At motion, Curry. We have a spot on our agenda now, and we have another one at the end of the meeting. If anyone would like to address the council, they may do so now or at the end of the meeting. We just ask that you state your name, please.
Hey, hi. I'm Karen Klein. Great to see you guys all again. I, when we did the Citizens Academy, I met Alexandra, and we talked about a few things. She's really wise in ADA issues. At any rate, I just wanted to introduce her, Alexandra. Right now, she's in Quincy, but she has an interest in moving to Coldwater at some point in time to be closer to services. And then she'll go ahead and tell you a little bit more. Thank you.
Hello, members of Coldwater City Council. My name is Alexandra Mitchell. I live in the village of Quincy right now, but I hope in the future to move to the city of Coldwater. However, today, I've come forward to speak to you about an issue that could affect even the towns surrounding that you govern, help with their governance. At the end of May 2024, an issue was brought to my attention regarding the legal rights of the disabled and their families to purchase lots and thus build homes in our city and communities. I was told people are being denied access to purchase these lots simply for not being able to walk up the stairs. In 1993, in Washington DC, a group of 60 disabled individuals crawled up the steps of our Congress to show how inaccessible our world is to them. This led to the Americans with Disabilities Act, to protect from such discrimination, of which today you are ignoring by allowing this to occur. However, one member was heard uttering to my friend that you would only listen if 15 to 20 people vocalize. Do you know why they are not here? Because of our unadapted world. Due to these mindsets of blocking access, they do not have transport. Their caregivers do not have the nurses to leave their charges to them while they speak. I myself have fought for disability assistance and not have, and have not received it. I have heard many times from people of many generations and ages say, "In my day, we did not have so many disabled." That is because they were all locked up and hidden away just down the road at the former Michigan State mental asylum. This is what was normal. This, and now it appears we are trying to go back to such by denying the members of our communities who are disabled, homes to live in. Where else will they go when their caregivers can no longer care for them? Problem being, these asylums are all gone, so they will end up as homeless on the street. 60% of homeless people are disabled. People do not think this will affect them until they are driving down the road and suddenly find themselves in a hospital at 35, being told they'll never walk again. They'd think, "Not me," until at 64, their joints start to hurt, making it hard for them to move as arthritis and general wear and tear sets in, and their home is harder to handle. They hold their new baby, wanting the world for them, but their baby had complications during birth that could not be predicted. That child now has cerebral palsy. So you may ignore the problem now, but there will always be disabled people, and eventually there may be enough voices to cause a real legal issue, enough for the ADA and civil rights groups to step in. But for now, I watch yet another diverse community exclude one of the minorities around them without a second thought. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the council?
My name is Chuck Wood. See, Chuck. So you remember, right? I'm representing a couple, or a business downtown, and, and my wife, Jean Wood. So Jeanie's Diner. And I'm here to kind of talk about the bond, which is on the agenda today, the bond for parking lots and some street work that needs to be, I'm a proponent of the bond for these funds to improve our city. I however want everybody to, in the city council and in the engineering group, to think ahead on this proposed Randall parking lot. Okay, many years ago was the Chandler parking lot, which took forever. And I was not the only one that came forward to complain. There were other businesses that were hurt by the long time that it took. Many days, I went by that parking lot and nobody was working. Why? I don't know why. Maybe they're missing some parts, some pieces, workers, but it needs to be, this Randall parking lot, if it's not being, if people can't park for our businesses, we hurt bad, really bad. And summertime, fall time is our big time for all those businesses. So I'm asking the city council and the engineering departments to work very closely on planning, and when you do funds, think about overtime and evenings. That's the best time to catch up, get this work finished, and the planning needs to be done so bam bam bam, everything works in sequence. We need to do a better job because Chandler was, I, I don't know if some of you remember, it was, in my opinion, I'm sorry to complain, it was a disaster. It took way too long. So I'm hoping we can put a lot of effort towards that project if the bond passes for funds for that parking lot. Thank you.
Thanks, Chuck. Good comments. Any other public comments at this time? Seeing none, we'll move to our consent agenda. These are items we consider to be routine. We'll take them in one motion unless somebody up here or someone in the audience wants an item removed for further clarification or discussion. Tonight on our consent agenda, we've got our minutes of July 8, planning commission minutes of May 6, our rec board minutes of May 1, our investment report for June, and a letter from Karen Kiss, student advisor of Coldwater High School requesting permission to hold the annual homecoming parade on October 4. Those are the items on our consent agenda. Does anybody in the audience wish anything removed? Anybody up here? A motion to approve it would be nice.
Remove.
Thank you, Randall.
Support.
Thank you, Travis. We have motion and we have support to approve our consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Consent agenda approved. Bills and accounts, $311,368. Questions for Keith or Tom?
I would just note that the, the larger items this period are the insurances for life and disability, our retirement system payments, the pickup truck for the fire department, and the fireworks are some of the larger ticket items in this, in this round.
Pay our bills, yes or no?
Move to pay the bills.
Thanks, John. Michael? We have a motion, we have support to pay our bills. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Bills are paid. Number seven, city manager report. Keith?
Thank you, Your Honor. Counsel, good evening, everyone. So first and foremost, to continue, the congratulations to Lieutenant Corinne Bordner for her 25-year anniversary with the Coldwater Police Department. As was noted in social media and various posts put out by the city, Lieutenant Bordner has served as the department's first female sergeant and the first female now lieutenant. And we'd just like to congratulate her and thank her for her continued dedication and service to the community. Secondly, hopefully you've seen a lot of social media and media communication relative to Kids Kingdom. So we're renovating Kids Kingdom, and DMS has power washed the, the facility, making repairs to the wood and staining are underway. We've got some other staff. Stephanie Burdick will be helping with painting, and new mulch will be installed in early August. So trying to spruce up Kids Kingdom, and just to continue, we had it inspected a couple of years ago, and it's in really good condition. It just takes a beating from its use and occasional vandalism, and it will be closed intermittently as work is being done, but we hope to have that done in early August. We'd also like to make reference to our ongoing brush collection, or not ongoing, we wanted to make sure that, that the next opportunity for brush collection is in October. But brush could be put in paper bags for smaller piles and limbs.
Keith?
Yes?
I've seen lots of brush piles around town, so what are we doing with those brush piles? Are people being notified we're not going to pick them up?
Yes, is the short answer. So, and I have, Bob Granger here too to answer any questions, but let me, so yes, we, we start with a door hanger and, in a personal outreach, and if they don't pull it back or bag it, then they would get a letter. After about 48 hours, it's, we go back and see if it's been moved. If it hasn't been moved or bagged, then after 48 hours plus, then we send a letter, then they get 10 days, and then we go and pick it up ourselves for a fee.
So is that based on complaints, or is that just driving around town noticing those piles?
So DMS staff divide, divide the city into four wards, and they have four staff that can keep track of each ward.
Gotcha.
And so they, we have made the first abatements under that program to charge somebody for that. Most people, Bob will, will tell you that most people are complying once they've been contacted, but even with the postcards, we sent out 3,000 postcards last month, and, and still, still trying to reach everybody to understand the program, and we understand that there, there's occasionally going to be.
3,000 postcards?
For each, each residential address, and, yeah.
Just to notify them of the rules, not.
Yeah, that was just the information. Yeah, that wasn't enforcement.
Okay.
That was just the informational piece to, to make them aware of the, of the, of the rules. So no, that wasn't enforcement. And so, and I've lost my train of thought.
Sorry.
But yes, so one of the, the other thing in the manager's report that I just wanted to note is that, you know, we will make an announcement if we think there's been a significant enough weather event or storm. We don't want 3,000 people to decide when and, when and if a storm occurred enough to, to necessitate brush pickup. So we can, there are places that you can drop it off at the DMS facility, put it in a bag. You can't burn it. We want to make sure people know that they can't burn it in the city. We even had one of those that I've heard, so, but yes, we're, we're, we're still in the informational and educational process of, of making people aware that we're not doing it every month through the course of the summer, and that the next available one is October. And in lieu of that, they can either put it in a bag or bring it down to us. And we've seen a, a marked increase in, in people bringing it to us, which is, just helps make us more efficient and, and less time devoted to it.
The restructuring of the fencing down at DMS is soon to be scheduled so people have more access to drop off their own.
Yep. Bob, if you want to come forward, since we got to.
He forgot his management report, so.
So, so yeah, they're, they're pouring the pads for the, the hoppers, in which people can leave stuff, and then we'll install the fence around that.
And how will that work, Bob? Will it be accessible 24/7?
It'll be accessible from early in the morning, 7 o'clock, to dusk, you know, so we'll have it shut itself at night, so it's not open in the, you know.
On the weekends?
Weekends, absolutely. Seven days a week, you know, every day of the year, it can open.
Cameras, in case people are using it?
Cameras will be there, yep. Cameras and lighting. And yeah, we're just going to have, you know, expand the accessibility to it. But Keith Wright, we have lines coming in. It's like, you know, and people, a lot of people were unaware it was there, and now they're getting compost, and mostly they didn't know it was there. And I think we've, we've given 479 notices over the last two or so months, and, and had a couple complaints, really, minimal complaints, and like he said, one abatement out of all those that became abatements. And most people will bring it in, some cannot, you know, they'll send it back and bring it out in October, I suppose. I, I really don't know. Most people have brought it in. So it's been really well received, and, you know, we're not having a big issue. It's just taking the time, as he said, what we do is go through after yard waste pickup, because the guys have also been instructed, if there's a limb on top of a bag, too hard to break up, grab it, you know. We're just not picking up piles. 80% of what I leave notice is for stuff that could easily be bagged, even grass clippings and, you know, just really small items that is too hard. We don't carry rakes and stuff. We're really hoping to grab a bag and get the whole town done.
What's the other side of that, Bob? How have you seen your staff time allocation change and, and improve? And what have you been able to do with those hours that you would have been picking up monthly?
Well, we're, when we look at numbers of how much emulsion or stones or, you know, for spray patching and the concrete work, we're well over twice, we've used twice the materials we've used all last year. So we're on pace to, yeah.
So you believe you're doing.
I think it's the right thing, obviously.
More productive, efficient things with your time?
Yep.
Okay.
I did, I did receive a couple complaints. I'm looking at one of them, a picture where there's a bunch of branches on a house, and it says, "Is this constitute a storm, or am I going to get another Granger letter if I put it out by the road?" And it's funny, and I mean, this, this person's somebody that takes care of their place and does the right thing and everything. It's somebody in my ward, and I shot over the, the brush reminder notice, and it said, "More frustration on my part regarding the decision to not have brush pickup once a month. Not everyone can get large brush items cut up to be, and/or out to the compost site because of their vehicles and stuff."
Correct.
So, I mean, as we worked through this, because the comment came like, "We don't want 3,000 people telling us when there's a storm, and we'll put a notice out." But I get that, but it's kind of like hail damage, right? Where they say, "Did you have an event or not have an event?" Because we might have 40 mile an hour winds on one end of town, and a 65 mile an hour gusts on the north end that knocks some branches down. You know, I, my.
But you could have that in the middle of a month period when you're doing it too, Jimmy.
No, that's what I'm saying. So are we going to say, "No, that's not brush pickup? We got thunderstorms and winds coming through it?" When.
Yeah, so when that happens, typically, we're out looking for it, right after the last and, and storm, if you will. I mean, we identified easily on our own over 30 properties that we knew we'd be dealing with, and there may be some that we didn't because it happened outside of our, we can't see if it's not out to the road, and then, yeah.
Right. But I mean, for, for notice, it's like, what's the right formula for it? Is it when there's a severe thunderstorm warn, or, you know, watch warning, which comes through, the warning, and the storm comes through and we have winds and there's some damage done? It might only, it might only affect a handful of properties, but now, are we supposed to wait? I mean, no offense, but I, I think told you this story, where I came home and I had the big ticket in the old days on my front door. I had a broken arm, and with one arm, I took a 50-foot-long branch with a foot and a half diameter, one-handed and dragged it off the road to the corner, and I got a ticket because it was blocking, this wasn't you. And I called the ci, I called the city, and I'm looking at the headline of the page, "BPU crews out at 3:00 AM after storm damage." And I said, "Yeah, I got this ticket." And they say, "You can't do that." I said, "It was from the storm last night." And he said, "There was no storm last night. The headline said your staff are out at 4:00 in the morning." So I don't want to see something like that. So I, I think it's, if we're going to do it, we need to have some, at least at city level, clear guidelines of when we're going to call it, and, and on our website, it needs to be out at like, I don't know, by 10 o'clock in the morning or something, so people get up, they can know they can, this can go to the road, or no, that didn't count last night.
There you play, Bob, that you'll put something on the website.
Yeah, yeah. And the reason behind that is, a lot of people have limbs that have been dead forever, right? There's not a leaf on them, they're, they're, and they're bringing them out and stacking them up in little piles, and they're like kitting it, and they easily break up. They've been dead since last year. I mean, so, and, so, and if they can't get the storm damage out while we're out collecting it, we just need to be notified. And we've had two or three people say, "Hey, I've got it, I just can't get it out," and they'll call in. Sometimes it's because of the notice, right? And we go back and get it. We've called two or three people and said, "Hey, we're going to pick up this," because what we did this last time, we had a few that we didn't see, and we knew we were doing this abatement. And I said, "Well, we're going to pick up this storm brush that," and we go out and identify it. We know if it's broke off and stuff like that. People aren't going to break big limbs off their trees. A lot of times, we get people that it's just cut, right? Everything's cut, and they've trimmed up something, and, you know, I can't say we're always right, but it's pretty obvious what is storm damage and what is not, but most of the time.
And it might have a crack, it'd fall, and then they might cut it off the rest of the way, too, so that's still.
Yeah, we had an individual, that was the case, but it came out of the neighbor's tree, so we'd identified it as trimmings, and then he called, and I went over, and he goes, "No, it's that tree." And clearly, it broke off and fell in his yard. And I said, "Oh yeah, we'll pick it up, get it out there." So, but we work with them, and we've had very little problems with individuals, really.
Have we declared any storm damage yet this year?
We haven't, because we didn't know how it would be handled. The last time there was a storm, what we've been doing is, on a weekly basis, taking a couple hours or an hour, and going through after we pick up yard waste to see what's left. If it's something our guys can't pick up during yard waste pickup, we need to identify what it is. And it's, most often, it's small branches, twigs, and, and grass clippings. Every once in a while, we'll see a limb that's too big for us to pick up in those one-ton trucks, so we create a list. And if it was cut, we talk to the homeowner. If it was broke off a tree, we usually sign it up and say, "We're going to have to get this." So, and we've been managing it fairly well. We, I don't know how many we picked up the other day. I think there was 20 on the list.
And it, that sounds like it's working. I just am concerned maybe a year from now, when people are like, "Oh, all I got to do is call," you might.
Oh, yeah, that's why.
You might start getting after storm.
Well, that's why we changed it. We put out something. Now, intermittently, we may give somebody a notice, or they may get a notice and say, "Well, that was storm damage, and we'll just have to deal with that on an individual basis." I don't think we've, we've had a handful of people tell us it was storm-related and, and.
Wasn't?
And, well, yeah, or, you know, we haven't had any event in weeks, you know, and then, so, "Well, it was from earlier this year." Well, it still has to get out in a timely manner, because, you know, we just.
Before Keith totally loses the train of the city manager point, let's, any quick questions for Bobby, or anything else you want to add, Bob?
No, we're good.
Okay. I, I think you guys will adjust, and it sounds like it's a process, so.
Yep.
Thank you, Bob.
You bet.
Keith?
Thank you. No, we anticipated that, and I appreciate the question, because we talked about it earlier and wanted to be prepared, so definitely, we know it's a, an issue, and it's an ongoing learning curve, so. Lastly, just, just reminders about the community events that are taking place. It's, it's relatively quiet on other things, but there are a number of community events. The farmer's market continues on Saturday mornings downtown. Hops at Monroe there again this coming Thursday. They're again through August 29th, and Entertainment Under the Stars. I think we're into the third week of Entertainment Under the Stars, and that's tomorrow night out at Heritage Park. And so we just remind you of those events, and then you have another event on the agenda tonight that'll be happening downtown, so.
Okay.
With that, that's my update.
John?
Keith, I've got a question for you. It was brought to my attention that the DDA, I think it's the DDA, was willing to purchase like parachute silk, kind of like an awning for Monroe Street, to be able to pull across to shade people when we had intense sunlight and high temperatures, that could be drawn across and then pulled back. What do we need to do to be able to facilitate something like that?
So we have been talking about it internally with staff, and I have, I have differing opinions even within my staff about whether they should be allowed or not, but yes, they wouldn't be, they would be thicker material, they wouldn't be like parachute material, but they're called like sunshades, or, we would have to install at least one more utility pole, and we would string them from utility poles. And the concern, I'll say on the fire department side, is the then accessibility from Monroe Street to access the fronts of buildings, or to get ladders or trucks in and through there. So we haven't brought it to you, but the, the DDA did act to, if it were to be eventually approved, to contribute towards their purchase. And so we just, we hadn't finished the internal debate about it yet, and bring it to you for, but if that's something, I know I've heard from other council members too, is an interest in that.
So how long would it take? How long would it take to get, I mean, we're halfway getting through the summer, we've got a lot of events. Is it something, if it was approved, it could be put up yet this summer, or is this a next year project?
Yeah, I think it's, it's the installation of a pole. I mean, I would think it would take a few weeks. I don't know if, there again, I could ask Bob to come forward as far as, because he was looking into the.
He had all his free time now that you're not picking up brush.
Yeah, so we were looking at some sales, and a couple concerns is obviously how that would impede their getting up to the second or third, you know, floor of these buildings if they came down through that way. And the other is the, you know, we'd have to know what the fire rating is on these things. And it would be, we would remove a section or block of the sidewalk and install another pole, and, you know, whether we can use some type of mechanical fastener that they can just drop real easy.
Right.
And that was my thought, but I, I don't, we haven't vetted it that far, so.
Cutters or something. So would these come down in the wintertime, so they don't collect snow?
They would come down, yeah. Well, they'd be installed around the time Hops opens up, and, or sooner if we had an event, we could put them up anytime. But they would come down, yeah, just to extend their life, and, but, yeah, I mean, fabric like just a Sun Sail, you know, type of material, and 30 by 40-ish, yeah.
Oh, excuse me.
Do other cities do these? Have we seen them anywhere?
When, if you do, at least the, the Google search and the images that I've seen, maybe not to this extent or size, where does Charlevoix use them? I just heard you mention.
They have them in the alley out there.
Yeah.
You know, we're talking about having to span a much larger width of area, so these would be pretty substantial, whether you made it, whether you made them rectangular or triangular.
Yeah.
We're covering a larger area.
Yeah. I mean, they're stock items up to 40, 60 feet, so they make these things big, so people are using them very similar. We did see them down south, but also the buildings were single level.
I think also, you know, the reality is, it doesn't get usually hot till the afternoon on the east side of the street, so you could, we could probably engineer out where we'd just run them down the center, and it would shade that side. The roof shaded after, I don't know what, about 7 o'clock, 8 o'clock.
We were there, you were, we were there, by 6:30, quarter, 7:00, there's quite a bit of shade. I just hope we're not opening up a Pandora's Box here.
Yeah, it's, obviously, it's.
Pretty successful for what, five, six years now.
A huge concern for the fire department at this time.
It ain't broke, are we, I don't know. Could we try, I mean, if you decide to go ahead, could we try like one and see how that works? Is that kind of what you're saying, do the south side and see how it works?
Well, I, I was thinking more sort of like trying to cover the whole street for, for access going up to those buildings that just went down the center. If you went down the center north to south, that's going to shade the east side of the, of it from probably 3 o'clock, 4 o'clock on, without having to cover from rooftop to rooftop.
Staff are still looking into it.
We'd still have to string it, we'd string it.
You'd run the wires this way, then you'd go down the center. You went, you don't have all the diagonals.
Staff are looking into it, that's the message right now.
One other question I have in regards to the whole Hops thing is, it, to me, it's gone very well, and, and I applaud the city council for having taken the initiative to make this happen. The one thing that I would like to see, and we talked about this a while ago, is it would be nice to have a few speakers strategically put on telephone poles so that we could actually hear somebody playing the music. You know, we, we, we went through this discussion a while ago.
But the counterargument to that is, I think people are there to talk to each other, not so much, I, I've been the one where you couldn't talk.
Okay, I'm not talking to cranky-
Elks had one the other day.
I'm, I'm just saying, it'd be nice to be able to hear, at least conversationally, you can carry out a conversation, but you could still hear some of the music, because right now, if you're basically a hundred feet down from where the performers are playing, you really don't hear the music.
And I think the other part was that if we had events where we didn't have music or prior to the music, the band starting, you could have some light, um, atmosphere music playing prior to the band starting. And I think two years ago it was, uh, one of the musicians coming up from Fort Wayne area got in a wreck on sixty-nine, and she, Courtney had gotten, worked diligently hard and, you know, was prepared for such a thing. She was able to call somebody, and I think they showed up like about forty-five minutes late or something like that, but she was able to get somebody to show up. So if we had that event and you have that many people and no music, you could at least play music down the street, Apple Fest, Strawberry Festival, all the other events we have where you don't necessarily have music, you could, you could have some atmosphere music or Christmas shopping music in the holidays, and there's a lot of other uses for it.
We looked at a few years ago.
Yeah, we definitely looked at, um, and I forget the number that we, we hung on it, but, um, but yeah, we can-
It's pretty expensive.
There's probably, well, there's, there's the permanent installation, and then there's, there's, whether or not we can work even with, um, with Courtney and doing something temporary, um, if, just during the course of events to have a second set of, um-
On a temporary, but the one, that one big, when we'd looked at it a few years back, that was like for all of downtown speaker system, all of it.
Right, if you, that was like a two-hundred-thousand-dollar system where you were-
Yeah, I don't think we need that. I don't think we need that.
But we can revisit that, that's, that, that fell off the radar, admittedly.
Brush pickup and hops, those are our big things here.
It's all good, it's, um-
Okay, either, uh-
So there was, there again, that was my management report.
Questions to Keith? Motion to get him done, approve his management report?
Motion.
Jimmy? Michael, I think? Okay, we have motion and support to accept that long-winded management report. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carried. Number eight, letter from Keith regarding street closure for the Glow Studio event. Keith?
Thank your honor, uh, South Monroe Street's becoming so popular that, um, this one is actually not, actually not for South Monroe, it's for South Handshit, correction, and, um, adjacent to Tibbetts and, and because of the location of the business, um, we have now, um, assisted a couple different, uh, private events that then host something for the public, and in this case, uh, Glow Studio is, uh, celebrating their one-year anniversary. Uh, they wanna put on a, an outdoor event, uh, open to the public. It would run from five to nine P.M. on Friday, August ninth, and they've been with staff already to help plan for that, subject to your, um, street closure request, and they were very similar to some of the other things that they're doing, uh, whether it's Two Bandits, whether it's, um, the Noon Club, um, or the one, the event that was just held, uh, on Sunday, yesterday, for Jim's, Jim's Place. And so, uh, we checked with Tibbetts, there's no conflicts there, and, um, and we would be providing similar support to what we've done with other events, uh, in, in the idea of sponsorship or assisting with, uh, the creation and promotion of events downtown. So if that were to be your, uh, decision, that would be Resolution twenty-four sixty-eight, um, to allow that to take place on Friday, August ninth.
Questions, discussion, motion?
Everybody loves a party, let's have a party now. Consider adoption, adoption of Resolution twenty-four sixty-eight.
Well, hang on, just one more, Jimmy? Randall?
I just, we charge, um, we charge-
Currently not, and-
But, I mean, city staff to put up the barricades and-
We've talked about that, um, today as well, about coming up with a, a fee schedule or if in, in supporting these, if they become more frequent or repetitive.
Could we get a number of what you think it costs us to, for Hops and everything? Could we're doing it for St. Charles, we're doing it for the Noon Club, we're doing it for Glow, which is, but just to know if we, if we know.
He's already got these running, yes, we talked about that this morning, so.
Okay. Yeah, good question, Randall.
Um, but yeah, going forward, you know, if this is, at some point, we're just gonna have to close down every street.
Well, we're doing it for Two Band, uh, Two Bandits, I think, four or five times, which is wonderful.
Right.
But we don't wanna make it so onerous they don't do it, but where's the fine line, but-
Let's remember where we were ten years ago and everybody complaining about nothing going on downtown. We're not gonna complain that there's too much going on downtown.
Let's find out what it costs us, and then we'll go forward.
Please listen up.
Jimmy, you had a motion? You had a motion for this?
I did make the motion.
You can support that.
Randall, okay. Uh, any final discussion on the Glow Studio? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Next, a memo from Paul Juchubjak regarding proposed electric rate vehicle charging demand. I don't think Paul's here, but the ever-avestant Andrew is gonna cover this, I think.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, council members. Last time, we had Paul come before you, uh, to explain and propose the, uh, the electric vehicle charging demand rate, uh, before you again today, uh, so stand on a report from last week by Paul, but happy to answer any questions that you may have or any clarification that I could support. Maybe just to, um, just to give a, for those that, if we're, I don't know if we're broadcasting at this point, but, um, just a quick over, this is for, for, for those commercial entities that are installing the charger, chargers, and then the rate in which they'll be charged for electricity.
This was introduced last meeting, now we're bringing it back for approval. We went through this last meeting.
Correct, so at, at a high level, as Keith said, this would be for, uh, commercial charging stations that are standalone E.V. charging only, so this would not apply to a resident, this would not apply to, say, the school, the hospital, a business who's looking to install a charging-
Same thing we were talking about, two, a meeting ago.
So this would be for a gas station-sized, uh, facility. Uh, the concern that staff has on our end would be, uh, this is going to be using the load of a business, uh, the, the demands on the infrastructure, uh, while only using the electricity of a resident. Uh, it's designed in such a way that, uh, they'll meet milestones at certain, uh, performances, uh, so it's based on, uh, how they're using their capacity factor, how effectively they're using energy, uh, so that does, uh, become more favorable as they use more energy, uh, and we're still collecting costs if they're, they're not, so paying for the transformer conduits, uh, everything else as well.
Okay. Um, yeah, we covered this last meeting, but we can cover it again. Any questions, comments?
Just, I've, just one question based off the last, uh, meeting. Is there, there's, I can't think of any product that the city, do we generate any product, blacktop or anything like that, that we use? We don't gen, we don't have a blacktop plant, we don't mulch, but that's yard waste that we're really getting rid of. So my only question is that, again, this is something that we're, we're buying for our use, and now we're selling it to somebody for them to sell and profit off of, and just that I believe that we should be considering, uh, at least a slightly higher rate, so that we're not, it would be like us having a blacktop plant, making blacktop for the city roads, and then a contractor saying, you know, I'd like to buy that blacktop because they can get it thirty percent cheaper from a commercial, from a commercial blacktop plant.
So for clarification, while on the residential side, we're paying a retail rate of about ten cents per kilowatt hour, uh, based on the different tiers. Uh, if they're meeting just the, the first tier below ten percent capacity factor, they're gonna be paying a realized cost of about fifty-one cents, uh, so it would be dramatically higher. And as they use more energy and achieve the higher performance ratings, they'll tend towards, uh, about eighteen to fifteen, uh, cents per kilowatt hour. Uh, so, while, I know certainly we have much lower rates on the residential side compared to, say, a consumer, uh, this would be at cost of service for energy.
Yeah, last, last meeting, Paul said it was at cost of service, but I believe he said it was thirty cents a kilowatt hour.
It would depend on performance, how we've modeled it based off of the different tiers, sort of five percent, ten percent, then twenty percent load factor. Uh, they could reach thirty percent based on what we're expecting, uh, we'll more than likely expect fifty to fifty-one cents per kilowatt hour.
Any other comments, questions? It's your pleasure, folks.
Move to approve ordinance eight sixty-five.
Okay, that's support. John? Okay, Mike and John? My own comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
No.
Okay, one no, number, thank you, Andrew.
Thank you all.
Number ten is letter from Keith regarding the bond renewal proposal for roads, parking lots and other improvements. Keith?
Thank your honor, council. Uh, admittedly, this is my first time attempting one of these, and, uh, it's also the first time in ten years that you will have seen something to this effect. Uh, there had been some prior refunding of bonds, uh, about five years ago on the utility side, and so, um, uh, so you may have, be familiar to some extent with, uh, the issuance of bonds, uh, but ten years ago, the city, uh, issued a bond, uh, supported by a one-point-nine-eight mil levy, uh, for five million dollars to, uh, engage in a construction of two parking lots and a number of streets, and, uh, that was placed on the ballot, the voters approved it, and we conducted the work, and we've been paying it off ever since, and so that expires this year, and, um, given the nature of the, uh, improvements that were made and the success of the project, uh, this would be a time in which we would consider authorizing a new millage, uh, to continue that work, uh, for additional road work and potentially a parking lot project, as, as we noted earlier. There again, depending on if approved, and then if a voter approved it, you know, what projects you wanted to apply towards it. If the city were to, uh, reissue or seek a millage, uh, a mil generates about four-hundred-thousand dollars, uh, one mil, and to finance, um, five million dollars, uh, that would take a one-point-five-two mil levy, uh, to do something less would be a one mil, uh, that we currently, uh, levy, uh, it would, would bring in about three-point-five million dollars if you bonded for that and paid it off over ten years. Uh, so there again, um, the one-point-nine-eight mil levy that we approved and issued, uh, ten years ago, uh, was reduced over that ten-year period to a one-mil levy, which is what, um, we're all paying, uh, city residents currently, and, um, I'd identified some projects in which, uh, we would look at doing for this, uh, uh, for these funds, including Randall Parking Lot, um, West and East Pearl, North Moore Street, and, uh, North Polk, or it could be North Fremont or others, uh, but those are all streets that would require some significant reconstruction, utility work, curb gutter, uh, sidewalk, and are, the scale of which I think are difficult on an annual basis without additional road funding. We've talked internally as well that with the, uh, growing fund balance, that we would apply some general fund balance to that as, um, to enhance what we could do over time, and that, that made reference to that in my memo, and, um, if this were to be placed on the ballot, it would take us a couple of years to get through the process, uh, between issuing the debt, uh, engineering the projects and building them, and you have then the, what that would look like in the form of a resolution, and what the, uh, language of the ballot initiative, uh, would entail. I did send out also a, um, an email late today, which you may not have had time to, to review, just a few more comments related to, uh, this item. To get it on the November ballot, uh, the deadline for the county clerk is August thirteenth, and so we would have to pass a resolution either tonight or, uh, August twelfth meeting, uh, to get that on the ballot. Obviously, there's, there's time in which to discuss it tonight and then, or you could ultimately decide not to place it on the ballot or to delay to a future election. Uh, the next one available would be, I believe, in May of, um, twenty-twenty-five. There again, uh, the expiring bond millage is now at a one-mil level, and, uh, you could decide as to levy one-point, uh, five is what we're recommending, five-two to be specific, uh, to generate that same, uh, five-million-dollar amount or some lesser amount, um, if you wanted to make it more equivalent to what is currently, currently being levied. That long explanation, um, I asked Tom to come forward because we wanted to tag team and have any questions related to, uh, the process. This is very much the first step in a process that would, uh, if you were to authorize seeking this additional funding, um, the resolution before you would place it on the ballot, and then if voted upon and approved, then there would be a whole nother set of, um, steps in which to issue the debt and then move forward with, um, engineering and funding projects.
Okay, good summary, I think we understand it. What's, uh, again, we're not making a decision, we're just letting the voters decide, but, Randall?
Um, is Randall Park, Randall Plaza, Randall Parking Lot, is that the last of the parking lots to be done?
Yes, for a full reconstruction, or they haven't been touched in like thirty years, yes.
Okay, and so, not trying to get the horse before the cart, does that even make sense?
Reverse that. The horse is always ahead of the cart.
Okay, it's good to know. Um, would the, like, the infrastructure be hidden below the surface and, like, would there be those water taps put for the upper-story apartments and-
We, we have learned through, through reconstructing a number of these, that yes, we would, we would extend the utilities to each of the buildings, and we've learned that that's the, definitely a preferred method at the time in construction and not wait till after, until the individual building owners would sign that, we would just incorporate that as part of the project.
Okay, and is it weird that they named it after me?
Yes, yes it is.
It's just odd.
Other thoughts?
Uh, what's the current, we're only paying one mil, and what rate is that current mil at?
When you say, what does it, what does it generate?
The interest rate, you mean?
Well, per cost of the homeowner. I'm looking at what it's gonna go up to, so this one is at one-point-five-two per thousand taxable, that's because we're at whatever mills we're looking at.
You've got a two-hundred-thousand-dollar house, it'll be a hundred-and-fifty dollars a year, right?
No.
No?
Okay, so I could throw out a couple numbers, so, and again, this isn't anybody's specific home, but citywide, the average taxable value, not, not selling price or anything, that the, the average tax value is roughly fifty thousand dollars, okay? So one mil for a house with a fifty thousand dollar taxable value is fifty dollars. One and a half mills would be seventy-five dollars. You can do, obviously exponentially, you can, you know, if you have a house that has a hundred thousand dollar taxable value, that's, one mil is a hundred dollars, and one and a half mills is a hundred and fifty. And right now, we are at the one-mil level.
The reason we're at one mil is because interest rates dropped and we were able to refinance the bonds, which we're not-
We didn't refinance this particular bond, because that, but, but, that does play into it, because though, the bonds that we're paying off right now, we're at a very low interest rate.
That's what I mean.
Right now, we're in a higher interest rate environment.
Which is why we didn't need the one-point-five to replicate. The voters approved one-point-nine-seven ten years ago, we've reduced it to one, and they're saying to raise enough to do the project, be one-point-five on the ballot, one-point-five-two.
All I'm gonna say is, having visited another community whose roads are not noted for being all that good, and after a two-thousand-dollar-plus bill to fix things to a pothole that wasn't taken care of in that community, I, I really don't like two-thousand-dollar-plus bills on my vehicle, you know? Fifty bucks a year is not gonna kill me. Um, two thousand is not a fun thing to deal with, so, I mean, I like what our community has done over the past ten years.
So you're saying stop leaving cold water?
That's what I heard, too.
Pretty much, there are some communities, yeah, let's, let's, I don't even wanna go there, kind of routine.
And then the other debate would be, do we really, will we take some of our money out of fund balance? I mean, I love Genie's Diner, but are the voters more likely to pay to get major roads fixed and, uh, improve our parking lots, which is important, or do we fund that with our, fund it with our fund balance? Take some of our savings to help do the parking lot and then put more roads, not right now, Chuck, sorry. Uh, I mean, that's just a thought, that's a future discussion. I mean, what's more palatable to the voters, to get more road money or parking lot? I don't, I don't know the answer, but-
It's a valid point, that's what I've heard from most people who've expressed comments so far is-
Fix my roads.
Fix the roads versus the parking lot, so.
The parking lot needs to be done.
They didn't necessarily say they would not vote yes if the parking lot was included, but they were more favorable.
That's up to us, I don't know. Randall?
And so, the current millage is expiring?
Yes.
Yes, correct. So renewal. But at what level?
Well, that's up to the voters, you know, if they, but roads, we, we don't have five million dollars, I mean, that would take, so the only way to do those major roads is something like this. We can't patch everything, um.
We would still have annual allocations of Act fifty-one funds, uh, that we do use for our, our milling, filling projects and other maintenance work, but this would be trying to do something above and beyond that annual work.
Comments?
Let the voters decide.
When, when would this be on the ballot if we make a decision tonight, or you-
November.
November?
The November general.
It's a major election, the most people will be voting, let, instead of slipping it into May, I don't, I personally don't like that.
So we have to come up with a number?
No, they've got, the recommendation is one-point-five-two.
Okay.
That's a recommendation, which is half a mil less than ten years ago, half a mil more than we've been able to reduce it because of the lower interest rate. That's the only reason.
And are we gonna change the language, John, this on the future, what we just talked about, or we need to do it now?
About the, uh, parking lot and stuff?
Parking lot.
No, because it, it's, it's general enough, it's, it would cover all of, whether it's streets or parking lots, you could, unless you wanted to exclude the parking lot, if you didn't want it to specifically be subject to include the parking lot.
What I'm saying is, we talked about using other fu, and this moved it, but it says two-point-five for the parking lot and two-point-five for the roads, so if we, I'm-
So if we, I'm asking, if we approve it this way now, is that holding us to spending it that way? And then that's the language that's gonna go on the ballot? Or can we change it?
Where do you see that?
Well, in my letter, I made reference to that. So, but in the, in the actual resolution, if you flip to the, yep, it's.
Yeah, you're looking at, you're looking at the resolution up at the top there.
The language of the, the language that would, that would, that would appear at the ballot would then make reference to the 5.1 million over 11 years at 1.52 mil.
And it's general repairs and replace.
But maybe some of it would have to come out of this for the parking lot, but not all of it, Jim. I guess what, I think we wanna talk about, we probably can't spend 2 and 1/2 million out of fund balance on the Randall Parking Lot, so maybe, maybe we could split it or something, I don't know. But we can decide that later, but. What's your pleasure, folks? As a roll call vote, if we, if someone makes the motion and gets support to put it on the ballot.
I don't know, I'm still hesitant about just keeping the parking lot in there, I'll be honest. I do know plenty of people who, maybe it's just how it was written up in the memo, but.
Just a reminder that what goes to the taxpayers is that first section up there. It's up, up to, you know, there, that's, it's, it's up to you, us, you know, as a city, to determine what money gets spent on. And we can decide, we can decide not to, but you're not, you're not gonna put in the proposal to the citizens the specifics.
Yeah.
It's gonna be general like that, because that's how you wanna do, have to do.
No, I, I agree, but just know, like, general population won't necessarily understand it that way if they've already read 2.5 million to a parking lot. Like, it's gonna be very hard to change their mind if that's what they read and they internalize that's what the money is going to.
Well, I suspect, Don, in the article will illustrate that we were gonna discuss that, but I, good point, I agree with you. But it may have to take some of this to do a part of the parking lot, too. That's what the majority of us are gonna have to decide. It's probably generic enough to move forward if, do we have a motion to put this on the ballot?
Yeah, so moved.
Thanks, John.
Support.
Thank you, Travis. Final talks, final comments? Okay, roll call vote whenever the clerk is ready.
Councilmember Rissman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mackin?
Yes.
Councilmember Canuck?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckwith?
Yes.
Councilmember Pesco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hazelbeaker?
Yes.
Councilmember Houts?
Yes.
And Mayor Kramer?
Yes, motion carried. Thank you, Tom. Number 11 is the discussion about visible crosswalk markings.
Travis, I know staff have been having conversations with Councilmember Mackin, and I know staff themselves have expressed interest in, in marking, or better marking, or decoratively marking some of our crosswalks. And so we just wanted to have an actual discussion about that. I've got some staff here that can talk about what the requirements are as it pertains to what you can and can't do, particularly on M dot jurisdiction roads like US 12 and Division, and then what we can do on our own streets. And it's becoming more popular to either just better identify in a, in a, in a manner like what you see in the picture before you, or to even become much more creative and decorative that you may have seen in other communities, and how they treat their sidewalks. So we do have plans for the one, one that's been pointed out so far is at the intersection of Sprague and Waterworks, or Sprague and, and Sock River Drive, that, that combination of intersection there, because Waterworks Park is gonna get renovated starting next month, and there's a big tree to be removed, and the sidewalk's gonna move. So we wanna, as part of the park renovation, enhance that, enhance that crosswalk, which was brought to our attention. So that'll be done as part of that project, and that is a local road, so we have jurisdiction over to what we wanna do there. But I was really wanting to open it up to like, you know, what, what is the council's overall feeling as to decorative, decorative crosswalks? And, and as, I know the DDA's working, they have a, a creative design committee. If we were to start bringing forward some, some recommendations or design suggestions as to how to treat sidewalks, you know, what, what would you like to see?
Keith, I have another one I've noticed. Bishop Avenue, where you put the new sidewalks in with the ISD for Waldron Center. I mean, that's right in the middle of that block, where they're nowhere near any kind of crosswalk. And the first thing I thought when I saw that is that need to be marked as a crosswalk right in the middle of that street.
Yep, there's plans underway. It's good that these guys are here today. That definitely is on the list. When, when that work is done, the signs get moved, and that'll get, you know, painted differently, yes.
And also, the crosswalks, the four corners are getting faded, too. I don't know if that's us or the state who does that.
That's the state, and they just, and they come through every couple of years, they, those are those, they're like. Yeah.
Those are faded, that you can't hardly see them anymore.
We can, we could put in our requests, but we're at the, at the mercy of them as far as.
Yeah.
Getting those, and you can see those obviously on the, on the, on the camera.
And if we're about to learn, are those are, the state has only one design, we have no, we can't request anything different?
As a, there's pretty limited, when it comes to what you can do in the, the state right of way is pretty limited, but that's why I have Joe here.
I don't wanna burst Audrey's bubble, but it actually is nationally, for any community, local road, private road, there's very, it's very limited because they want it to be uniform. So you are held to just purely white lines. Most of our local crosswalks are transverse lines, just two transverse lines. What's considered a high emphasis crosswalk is what you see on 12 with the ladder.
The bars, the white bars?
Yes, ladder, yeah, they're called ladders. So at a mid-block, like where they just put one in there, you would want people to more see that, because from a distance, transverse lines like this, you can't really see them. So if you see the ladder, you're more likely to recognize it. And that combined with signs, I don't know if anybody's noticed, but in January, I went through all the school zones, all the crosswalks in the school zones, and put up signs with arrows pointing at the crosswalks. And we just haven't gotten to the crosswalk painting yet, which normally we only do like a couple months, or a couple weeks in the fall. We try and go through and paint the school, the school zones up.
Or school stairs.
So M dot, yeah, I think they would be hard pressed to change anything, but on another level, we're held to the same standards that M dot has, just because that's what's nationally recognized. The picture up here, you are allowed to do a backdrop of like terracotta or slate, something that exemplifies like a landscape, like pavers, bricks, concrete. So they are very subdued colors. You're allowed to do that. And they put that in there because they realize that people are gonna do streetscapes. So like our ribbon along the sidewalk downtown is brick. So if we were able to do a terracotta or a brick background on the crosswalk, it would match. So that's why they allow that.
Joe, so when we're talking about the state, 27 and probably 12, right? Our downtown streets, if we're crossing just from Hansett, across Hansett?
Mm-hmm.
Can we do what we want, but if we cross 12, we have to follow them? Or is it within so, so many feet of?
On the side streets?
Yeah.
We would obviously still have to ask permission, especially if it's within their right of way, but some of them are out of the right of way, some are in the right of way. I'm sure they would be okay with it, but we, it's not something that I've actually asked the engineer for our region.
Or we could do our own?
Yes.
Okay.
But like I said, it's just very limited to these subdued colors.
Okay, so to these subdued colors, but we couldn't necessarily.
Like the brick.
We couldn't necessarily do like some cities have put their logo across.
Correct.
But that we could do on our side streets?
No. Blanket, blanket.
All streets in town.
Blanket law. It's a national law that's been adopted by the state. I have documentation if you guys wanna, if you guys wanna see it. I mean, I, I don't wanna speak for my opinion or anything, but I.
You're the expert.
Yeah, so.
But there are, but the example I'll use is, the city of Battle Creek did paint a number of their side, crosswalks within their local jurisdictions, different colors. I mean, it is something that's utilized, whether or not they're abiding by the law.
And that, I can only give a recommendation, because if you don't follow the manual of uniform traffic control devices, there can be liability involved with that. Because they, they set the guidelines, they set the rules with how you're supposed to do markings, signs, all that thing. It's just like, you don't see a greens, green stop sign anywhere, you only see red stop signs.
Even on our side streets?
Yes. So I only can give, I can only give a recommendation, but.
But you can do the brick kind of look across 12, the city, the state lets you do that?
I have not reached out to them regarding whether they would approve something like that or not, but.
Where's this green one you're showing right now?
This is, I believe it's Grand Rapids. I recognize that cross, crossing, so.
It's not legal, or that is legal?
It depends on whether it's, here, it doesn't look like it would be, but they do, green is reserved for bike paths. So through an intersection, you can do some bike path marking, if it's a shared use, but it's very limited on that.
Where do you go, Travis?
But I like the sign, I mean, can we do signs around our parks, too, like we're doing the schools, like signs that point to the crosswalk?
Most of our parks are right beside schools, so they're already in the school zones.
But Waterworks Park, for instance, that's not. I mean, there's, well, I guess Lincoln is there, but I haven't seen any signs around that park for crosswalks.
Right. So signs can't go at stop signs, because it's inherent, and it would confuse with the stop signs. So it has to be a place where there's not. So on Sprague, are you specifically talking like crossing from the ICE Park?
Crossing Waterworks.
Crossing Waterworks, okay. So if we move the sidewalk like we plan to, we, we'll just need a basic crosswalk across that, because actually the way it is right now isn't even legal either. The crosswalk is way behind, you're not allowed to have a stop sign ahead of a crosswalk. So this, this stop sign is like 30, 40 feet ahead of the crosswalk, you have to have stop signs before crosswalks. So that's why we're looking at, we took a humongous tree down, hated to see it go, and we're actually gonna straighten that cross, that sidewalk, so that it goes right in front of the stop sign.
Instead of using the two lines, can we use, change that to make our standard, the ladder kind of crosswalks?
I mean, there's nothing wrong with that.
It's more visible.
Yeah.
I mean, if that's the best we can do, I'd prefer that over just two lines.
Yeah.
I mean, if we could change our standard to having something that's, like I said, has more paint, has more white, something you notice, and if there's a sign, if we can put one there, it's gonna even draw more attention to it.
And then is there a different color we might wanna pick?
I don't, I think it's just white, isn't it?
Well, that's, you said we could do certain subdued colors that were legal, correct?
As a backdrop.
Right.
Like the terracotta on her.
But if you do a ladder sidewalk, it's gonna be very difficult to, I'm just thinking of painting.
Keep it simple.
Right, I was thinking of.
Keep it simple.
Painting a ladder and painting a background is gonna be.
I'm just asking what our options are, so that we could all design.
Didn't you say somebody was coming up with some designs?
I think that's, I think what will come from the main streak and the DDA ultimately will be some recommendations as things to do.
It's within those guidelines, though.
We'll have to talk about that at the time, but.
So do you want red, or do you want red?
Pick.
At this point, I just wanted to start the discussion, kind of get out, to kind of make reference to Waterworks Park and what we.
And what have you learned after this discussion? Anything?
Kind of like the shade sales, there's like two, two opposing forces on, on the crosswalks and shade sales, so.
Remind me not to go get ice cream with you.
So is this something we're gonna further investigate, then? Get some more designs, see what we can do?
I'd like to see what, what they come back with for some designs, so that we've got something that we could look at.
I just feel like we can do better than we're doing now.
I just like the idea of whether it's a ladder or, or that more color across.
Right, I agree.
If it's just white, that's fine with me, to really make them stand out.
Right.
And in the school zones this year, like I said, I'm really gonna push for, because we, we did the signs this winter, this fall, I am gonna, we gotta put some crosswalks in, like the one on Michigan, Agroll Drive that just got put into. And then there's Western, which we get a lot of complaints about Western, so we put the signs up there, now we start to change. It's got a, it's got a crosswalk, just not the ladder.
So is this work that we can do, or do we have to hire this out if we decided to go with the ladder look or?
No, we can, we're completely capable of that.
We're not picking up brush, we got. Jim?
To Bob's point, yeah, so last year, I mean, this will be in our report next year, but last year, we poured 100 cubic yards of concrete. This year, we've already poured 132. That's a lot of sidewalk that we've done, so. And that's just like the tip of the iceberg with it. Like, we've, we really pushed it this year.
Do we know, speaking of sidewalks, what we're gonna do with the side, the new sidewalk over in Thompson, where it just stops, and then there's about a 12 inch drop to a yard?
I think you need to call the BPU, they did that work.
No, that wasn't, that wasn't them, no. As part of the, so we've, to fill in the gaps of some of the subdivisions, we've talked about bringing forward a, a special assessment project, because that homeowner didn't, didn't have to put, didn't put it in at the time. So for those, for those that either weren't put in when a home was built, or have vacant lots in a subdivision that now has over 75% of the lots developed, we're gonna be looking for them to put sidewalks in. So that, that one's at that person's responsibility.
But that was a mistake, it got slipped by somehow.
Well, the, the road didn't exist at the time on that side. Thompson Boulevard got extended after he built his house.
I guess my question, though, is, either which way, that's in the city easement, when you have one yard down here, and the other yard just stops and drops a foot, why didn't we cut that sidewalk down into grade? Because now are you gonna have a step in the sidewalk?
No, I think, I mean, I've been, I've looked at it quite a bit. I mean, it's, that person's yard is, it's much, it's actually below the.
So are we gonna force them to raise the grade of their yard? Or, I mean, well, or do you have a staff?
Well, we'll have an engineer look at it, but no, I think you, I think you have to raise the grade, I think the.
You always want sidewalk to be higher than the curb so that water sheds.
I understand.
Yeah, yeah, that's tough.
So the grade of the lawn in that case is below the, below the, the high point of the curb, so, I mean, it's. So I think the sidewalk that was put in that, that ends there is, is at grade with that house's yard and curb.
So somebody with a flat yard where it goes to the road, it's all of a sudden, we're gonna hump it up so we can put a sidewalk on there, on that house? Or you're gonna raise this, are we gonna raise the whole grade of his yard? Because his yard just gradually sheds down. I mean, I understand what you're saying, because mine was the same way, and when they continued building behind me, the, in the city right of way, the dirt was down below the curb. I had the city come in and raise it. But when I'm, when you're looking at that yard, it's, their yard is down here, and what you're talking about is raising the sidewalk up to here. So now you're, that's just gonna be.
Well, it would, it would match where the current sidewalk dead ends, and then it would be straight across to the, to the intersection at that grade.
Joe, you're the one that opened your mouth and said sidewalk, so. Big mistake.
Yep.
Should we mark that? Should we mark, that should be marked, because it, you haven't seen this, it's literally a sidewalk, just, just ends, and then it drops that far. Somebody's gonna wheel off of it, ride off of it, or walk off of it.
You're talking about, you're talking about right on Pillsbury, the corner of.
Thompson and Pillsbury.
With Tom, yeah, yeah.
It's, or, yeah, I know, yeah. On the, on the side of the corner of the Blue House.
Yeah, legally, you could probably put a sidewalk in sign at the end of sidewalk.
The what?
A sidewalk in sign.
Or something.
Yeah.
At least temporarily, too.
Okay, we're putting Chuck to sleep, so let's, any other thing on the, you're gonna bring some designs for crosswalk back? Is that the plan, or some color?
Keep it simple.
I don't know.
Well, as, as we propose these, or, yes, we'll bring, we'll show you what we're planning to do on, like, like at Waterworks and Sprague.
So timeline wise?
We'll follow the state guidelines.
If we get some pictures or renderings we'd like in a style, I mean, what, how soon before we can start putting those down? Is that a fall project, is that a spring project?
It completely depends what it is. The ladder stuff we can do right now.
Okay.
Like the contemporary sidewalks, we can do ourselves right now. I mean, but I think what Audrey was looking at was artists, right? Go ahead.
Next spring.
Just a point of clarification, when you're talking about sidewalk design, you're now talking about within the realm of the colors and the options that Joe presented on, correct?
For the crosswalks.
Right, so, yeah, I don't have a role to do there, now that he's the expert on what is allowed and permissible. I will say, when we were originally talking about crosswalks, public art was certainly one potential use of those. You know, they're easy to paint, it's not particularly time consuming or difficult to maintain. But the bigger issue really is perceptions of safety downtown. I know that we haven't finished or released the full report from the corridor survey that we completed, which had close to 440 responses. But the feedback that we have gotten through so far is overwhelmingly that there is a perception of a lack of safety at downtown crosswalks, even in areas that are painted. So we were originally thinking about, in what ways can we improve the visibility of those areas in a way that's not cumbersome or permanent? And do it in a way that maybe serves dual purpose by also creating more public art and more interest and tying into things like the museum or other downtown assets. But while public art is fantastic and we would love that to, that's useful in and of itself. One of the underlying concerns really is safety and a lot of the stories that we're getting about people crossing, not crossing those kinds of things. So I am interested to see kind of what those color options are and maybe we could still consider some changes for downtown because we know just based on the feedback that we have received that it's very important to people. And I myself, obviously, am out and about crossing very often and would appreciate some more visibility there as well. I know that we, Joe has also, I kind of grilled him last week and he was very kind and patient with my questions on the phone. Has also said in areas where we don't have existing crosswalks, like on Monroe Street, we can't paint those and just decide that we want them to be there just because we know that people are using them that way. So it's not really a solution to that yet, but it's something to keep in mind that maybe we can keep having conversations with MDOT and maybe in the future, there might be more flexibility there or who knows. But certainly we'll stay on top of mind, given how many people we know visit the downtown each year and make use of that corridor.
Thank you, Audrey.
Good.
Thank you, Joe. Uh, we have a last spot on our agenda for public comment. Anyone who would like to address the council, they may do so now.
The sidewalk thing, so is there, can a sidewalk go from, across Monroe Street across 12? I mean, a crosswalk on Monroe Street across 12?
I think because they took the light out, they took the crosswalk off because they don't want people crossing there.
So, but, yeah, yeah, it's like Frogger. So, yeah, I, we cross, lots of people cross. You have the Monroe Street, opposite of Monroe Street. Now, can it not go there?
Chuck, we can interact after the meeting if you want. There's a spot for just comments if you'd like to address the council, but we'll certainly stay after and talk about those things if you have questions. Any comments?
Yeah. Okay, Tom, thank you.
No, I'm just saying, that's how we do it.
Yeah, I, okay. So on the the money for the parking lot, there's a, the parking lot improvements, obviously, the parking, the ones that have been done are beautiful. Across Tibbetts, very nice. And you've seen a lot of improvements to the buildings there. Now, Jean and I have had a couple of different projects for 14 and 16 West. And 16 West does have one apartment up there, two sisters live there. And we have a monitored smoke alarm, fire alarm system, but it does keep me up at night sometimes. I worry about it not having a sprinkler system. Sprinkler system is very difficult because you have to go through the front and it's not easy to get to. When the parking lots get redone, you'll get a a large water diameter line that goes in the back of the buildings and allows for much easier hookup for fire sprinkler systems. Also, Bakery was 500,000, 600,000 dollars we were looking at for improvements, investment. But Bakery with electric special ovens would require three phase. What's back there right now, I'm limited, but it's, I could pay extra and have it done, but if the parking lots are improved, that's probably included. So you, with a parking lot improvement, you'll see more money being invested in those buildings along there and being safer. So and then a comment on burning in your yard. I have a crispy hot dog that I use for lunch.
Good to know, Chuck, we'll be over. Any other public comments at this time? Any unfinished business at our level? Any new business at council level? Then, we're done. Rock and roll, that would be interesting.
Sometimes you have to.